I would like to call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM.
Can a doctor?
Yes.
Can I have a chair?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Okay, public comment and recognition of guests. We did not have any requests for public comment. So up first, we have presentations, and first is exemplary knights. Okay. We'll start with our exemplary knight staff members. For our exemplary knight staff members, you have been recognized by your peers for your exemplary work. As a Board of Education, we want to thank you for your efforts and your positive impact on Blue Ridge. Up first, from Schneider Elementary, we have Chris Wells. She's up. From the intermediate junior high, we have Jenny Jamison. And from the high school, we have Brandy Hanson. Tonight, we also recognize the exemplary actions of many students. These actions brought these students to the attention of their teachers and the principal. As a Board of Education, we appreciate your efforts and excellence, and we want to say thank you for a job well done. From the high school, we have Kayden Mayfield. He's here. I know. And also, from the high school, we have Ellie Schlieper. Unfortunately, they couldn't be here. For eighth grade, we have RJ Coffey. Still no. And seventh grade, we have Felicia Butler. There she is. For sixth grade, Emma Cole. For fifth grade, Landon Price. Fourth grade, Parker Lilly. Third grade, Grayson Maddox. Second grade, Riley Schmidgel. First grade, Liliana Tybal. And kindergarten, Ava Cook. Up next, we have the technology update. I'm sure everyone wants to stay for this.
It's February, we're back. This is our month. Glad to be here. We just kind of did a quick summary of just highlights from this year, some struggles that we've had, as well as looking forward to next year. So in the past, a couple of years back, we had done a yearly plan for technology. And we decided, because A, it takes forever to write that plan, and we weren't very thorough in that process, we decided to kind of change our processes, and we broke into a lot of different meetings throughout the year, and we've kept that this year. So I'm going to start by, you guys have the Chromebook agreement, by the way, in your consent, so that's also a February item. I'm going to start by just talking through some of the highlights. So with our spinoff meetings, what that's allowed us to do is just have communication amongst the parties involved. So examples of that might be health, life, safety, where we meet and discuss different issues involving safety. We meet with classroom integration, we talk about AI implementation and things to that nature. We have a security group. We have, gosh, I wrote them all down, curriculum, state mandates, that's a big one. So it kind of depending on the frequency of the need is when we meet. Some of those are set up quarterly, okay? So we've continued that process this year, and we like it, it's working well for us, so it's something that we plan to continue in the future. We really spent some time at the beginning of the year expanding our rostering for different curriculums that are online to create single sign-on for students. So that included TCI, which is social studies, SAVIS, which is science, and then FastBridge, which includes our SEL screener. So that takes a lot of back and forth between the companies and us, and Paige is usually involved in that, too. We're finally at a point where I feel like we get less and less requests for help with crisis go, which means that we're, we feel like we've fully implemented it at this point in time. So that's been a success for us. New camera locations have been added, there's several needs that were identified. We adopted our AI policy into place, and this year's focus has really been talking to the ELA teachers, six through 12, about introducing students to AI in a way that's responsible. So we've met probably three or four times, I think there's one coming up next week again, where we get to kind of follow up with them and see kind of how that process is going. We learned that our Chromebook monitoring was at the point where students were learning a lot of ways to get around it, and so we made a switch, probably October timeframe, to a different platform called Deladeo, and so that process has been new for staff. They can monitor Chromebook usage during their class time, and overall, we're very pleased with what it's offered to us, and nobody has seemed to circumvent that yet, so that's good. And then last but not least, at the junior high, we added a component for parent communication, which is called rooms, and the really nice thing that we like about that is that it's integrated into our Blue Ridge app. So if parents have the Blue Ridge app, and they have a student in fourth through eighth grade, when they're getting messages from their teachers, all they're doing is accessing the Blue Ridge app, they're not going into a separate entity and logging in. So that's been a good move as well. Some struggles. So mainly, well, not mainly, but laptop and desktop purchases this year proved to be pretty unreliable, equipment-wise, for us. So we purchased refurbished items, and the first of the laptops that went out, we started hearing from staff that the battery itself was not lasting very long, so much back and forth with the company, they were warranted. Eventually, they replaced all the laptops, which means we distributed laptops twice to staff, as well as desktop purchases, same company. Turns out that the image was not good on the desktops that we purchased from them. So again, lots of back and forth communication with that company in order to get those replaced. So Dave actually, right before the meeting, informed me that we received those desktops, hard drives, for replacements today. So that's been a struggle going throughout the year, okay? I'm going to let him talk a little bit about secure entry doors, but that's another struggle.
Thanks. Secure entry doors. So the project for replacing, or coming up with a better secure entry for all of our entries in each one of the schools, started last year, and we had slated to have our first door completed in August, which would have been the entry for the high school. We were moving from the corner up here out to the old main entrance that's coming into the gym. Unfortunately, we've had a lot of issues. The kindest way to say it is probably, we just, the vendors had some problems. We, we've been ready, we've had the software and the hardware ready to do the secure entry since, I think, September, oh, well, August, August, September timeframe. We've been unable to install it up to this point. The vendor is continuing to work and continuing to get, make progress on getting the doors ready for us. Right now, at the high school entrance, we have migrated to having students come in that door. We identified another issue this morning with, with the door, or the way the door locks operate. We're hoping to get that fixed by Tuesday, and if that, you know, fingers crossed, that gets done, then we'll finally have a complete entrance there that's working. Then we can get to implement the secure entry software. When that is completely done, that will allow us to have visitors to the building, will come in that entry, they'll check in on a iPad device that'll check against background, a brief background check for, like, sex offender databases, things like that, take a snapshot of an ID, log them into the database, and then it will print out a, will print out a visitor tag for them that they'll pick up in the office, and then they'll be able to move around the building, and we'll be able to track where they are and what they're doing within, within the building. So again, we're, we're excited to get that completed, but it's, it's been a significant delay and been, been a lot of, a lot of hardship, I guess, in getting that done, so.
So looking ahead for next year, our ticketing system is through a company called One Desk, and that particular service is, is wonderful, but it's also very extensive. So we're learning how to create project management through that software, so that's a goal for us, is to just be more familiar with that process. Obviously, the track will be a lot of work in terms of audio, cameras, door controls, all of those things will be taking place this summer. Cybersecurity is going to continue to be a real focus. When the State of Illinois published 48, basically, standards, best practice for school districts to follow for cybersecurity, and Dave did an honest review of what's currently in place, and we scored 26. So we have a lot of room to grow towards that. He included in your consent agenda, or included in our board report, was also a memo regarding our security software that we're using, and the increase in price on that, there was a freeze for about three years, I believe, and now they're really hiking it up, so we wanted to include that for the board as well. We have view boards still to install, that's from Esser Money, so that will be a focus over the summer. Our domain is going to be transferred to the cloud. And last but not least, we're going to be upgrading our server for our virtual machines, so that's another big project. So that's kind of a looking ahead, highlights, and a few struggles that we've experienced. Do you guys have any questions for us? Yes, Sig?
We have servers for virtual machines. What are virtual machines?
Yeah.
So we, we currently have six virtual machines that we, that we operate. Virtual machine is a server that, the server itself thinks it's a, it's an own computer, but it's actually multiple computers that operate on one computer. So that's kind of what a virtual machine is. We operate multiple servers on that virtual machine. It's an opportunity for us to utilize the horsepower of a computer and not have to buy multiple machines to do the same thing, if that makes sense. So the virtual machines that we operate, we operate a HVAC server, file server, we have a print server that operates on the virtual machine, our domain controllers operate that way. We also have something called an RDP controller, so we've got quite a few machines that operate in a virtual space. Also allows us to easily back those up and be able to transfer them from one machine to another. What we're going to be doing is actually updating those virtual machines to current software. They're currently operating on software that was produced in 2019, we're getting it up to 2025 standards.
Any question?
More answers.
Thank you, guys, for having us. It's good to see you.
Okay, next, we have communications. In your packet is the IASB talking points, also the IASB Advisory Committee notes, and the IASB Governance Award that we have been awarded again. I think we'll talk about that more during, at the clause, right?
You can do a little bit now, if you'd like to.
The, um...
So the Governance Award is every two-year opportunity that we have, and we came together and answered the questions that they had for us, and submitted those, and we just recently got the letter, it's on page 13 in your packet, where you can see that we were approved receiving that Governance Award. So that's a big thank you to all the school board members for being part of that, and all the work that you do on a daily basis that we were able to share with them. So that is something that will be recognized at the upcoming IASB Division meeting for Abe Lincoln, and so that's something that we'll want to know. We're going to ask you to respond about that dinner, either yes or no, please, to Christie by Monday, okay? I will not be able to attend that one due to a medical procedure, so it would be great if we had some other board members who were able to attend.
Yeah, it's definitely a little bit of a drive, but since we're one of 46 school boards in the state that are being recognized, a little drive to New Berlin. Do you want to go, Ryan? I mean, this could be your first time to step in for Hillary.
There you go.
If you want to come to New Berlin with a...
Where is New Berlin?
It's like... It's a Thursday.
I was going to say, you go over to Springfield and head down.
Oh, as well as Freeport.
Yeah, so. And then the other thing under communications is the IASB Division meeting. Okay, then we have committee reports.
No committee reports this month.
Administrative reports. Hillary?
Okay, just a few highlights. All the administrators, myself included, have been working on our summative evaluations. Those are due lickety-split, so those will be done by everybody. They spend a lot of time working outside of the school day, so thank you to the admin team for your dedication to that. We recently had our McKinney Venture, our homeless compliance, check from the ROE. Mr. Payton was able to attend most of that with me, Kayla Arnoldts from the ROE came, and we're doing just fine there, we just signed off on the documents, that that's all done. And then the other big project that I'm working on right now is our ROE compliance, that's an event that happens every four years, and basically you have to prove that all the legislative things that have been mandated since the last four years, you are following with all your posting on the website, with all your, sometimes I ask Paige for agendas that we can upload to show that we've had all the trainings that we need to have. So that's a very long project, and Pat Durley from the ROE will be visiting at some point. Usually, it's an announced visit in the springtime, and he'll come and look at some things in person, but other things I'm uploading to a system, and then he's checking as we go. So I think we'll be in good shape when we're all done this spring.
What does the ROE stand for?
Regional Office of Education. Yep. And if you work there, you call it RO.
Okay, Mr. Payton, you're up next.
There we go, I got it, good. Good evening. I'm going to hit a few things tonight, so first thing I just wanted to touch base on is our pre-K screenings, I always like to get that out there, there's a couple of good things. April 3rd and 4th, we have our pre-K screenings that are taking place, those are our spring screenings, for any three- or four-year-old that does not turn five before September 1. So please get out the word, it's great for us to get as many students into our program to, that way, they are ready and have those foundational skills to begin kindergarten and have a successful school experience. Additionally, we have another mark your calendar event, so the second and third graders will be hosting a spring program on March 18th, I'd love to invite the board to attend, it'll be at 6:30, and it'll be at the Moore Gym High School. As far as just some things happening in the building, we had our 100-day celebration a few weeks ago, that is such a fun event. We do a variety of things, mostly K-1 related. Our kindergarten puts together a 100-day parade, where they create a variety of 100-day projects that they showcase throughout the building. Additionally, first grade did a variety of 100-day activities, from 100-day county collections to creating items or objects with 100 items, and then additionally, some of them dressed up as 100-year-olds this year. So that was kind of a new experience for us, we've, I've seen that before, but it's kind of the first time our building has participated in some of our classrooms, so really, really a fun event, and that's really just a shout-out to our teachers who are just continually providing ways that are fun and engaging for our kids, to keep learning fun, but yet also, you know, impactful. Last but not least, I have a very exciting announcement to make. I am excited to introduce our recommendation for our next principal at Ruth and Snyder Elementary, Ms. Sunny McMurray. Sunny is over here, come on up, Sunny. Yep. She's joined tonight by her husband Jim, and then Henry over here, and Genevieve, and then she has another daughter, Olivia, but unfortunately, she's studying abroad, so can't be here tonight, so she's probably really enjoying herself, but Sunny, absolutely, yes. Sunny came very highly recommended, I can tell you that as a group, not only was that, but you know, throughout our interview process, where we had two teams, one admin team and one teacher team, she was really the overwhelming candidate from all the individuals involved in that process, and so we're very excited to bring her and this recommendation to you tonight, and I want to give her a minute just to share a little bit.
Good evening. I am so excited, I know that I have some big shoes to fill, and apparently, an elf costume to fit into, so I'm excited about that. I'm incredibly humbled. When I started my teaching career, my first principal told me that really what parents want the most for their kids is for their kids to be loved when they get to school. Yes, we want them to achieve academically, yes, we want them to have friends and succeed socially, but really, they, they really just want to know that when they walk through that door, somebody loves their kid as much as they love their kid. And when I was considering where to move into administrative position, I've been sitting on my admin degree for about 20 years, and not really interested in moving into that role quite yet, I was really particular about where I wanted to be, because I wanted to be in a, in a school where, first of all, pre-K3 is my jam, those kinder and first graders like I was, that was, I was about tearing up, I'm like, I can't wait to meet them, but for them to know when they come into Snyder that they are loved, and that they belong, and that we are a unit to help them succeed. I am incredibly excited to become a Blue Ridge Knight, and I know that there is, that you are placing a lot of trust in me in this position, and I thank you for that.
Right, do you have any questions?
Sig, nothing? Question? I know, but Sig usually.
Thank you, Mr. Payton. All right, so we've had... Oh, there we go. So we've added our, some exciting things happened since we last had our board meeting. Most importantly is on January 17th, we had our academic awards assembly, which we started last year, so we were able to have two different assemblies, one with our fourth through sixth graders and another with our seventh and eighth graders, focusing on attendance, which is one of our big goals through our school improvement plan and just overall. So we recognized students that had 95% or greater attendance, and then academically, we were wanting to celebrate our kids that met or exceeded on the IRA testing that they took in the previous year, so we wanted to make sure, we have that upcoming, we wanted to make sure that our students understood the importance of that and the value that is in that, to show what they can do. Additionally, for seventh and eighth graders, we recognized our, both our honor roll and high honor roll, too, so it was a really good time, we were able to get it done, and a good time, and we've been practicing on how to get through that assembly, so it was good. Upcoming, we have, actually, today began our spring play audition, so they're starting today, and they'll go tomorrow, and we'll have performances starting April 24th, going the 25th, 26th, and 27th, so they're going to have four performances this year, so very excited to hear all the great things that we've added to our gymatorium. So, very excited to hear all the great things that we've added to our gymatorium over there in Mansfield to help with the sound, so not just from the pads to the baffles up in the ceiling. So, I'm excited to see the impact that that will have. Couple of things real quick is that we have this weekend, we're hosting the SVC volleyball showcase. So, we'll have six teams coming in that are seated, starting at nine o'clock in the morning. The eighth graders will travel to Tri Valley Friday, the 28th, and they'll have an eight team showcase there. And then regionals this year for volleyball will be hosted by Ridgeview, and those will be the 1st and the 8th of March. And lastly, we'll be having a sweetheart dance for the junior high on March 14th from 6:30 till 8:00. I get to chaperone this one, I'm so excited. Yeah. And so, yeah, they've been raised, they sold some suckers during lunch on the 13th, and they did a great job to help raise funds for that. So, we're excited about these things to come. Any questions? I, you know what? I don't think I could get my wife to go, but I will ask. Thank you, Sig.
He's going to get turned down.
You're always, you can join me, too. We always need more chaperones.
You got kids there that want to see Dad as the chaperone? No? No? So, you could scope it out for them? Yeah. Well, as you guys did your tour tonight, you probably noticed a lot of stuff about FFA in the halls, so this is National FFA Week, and so we always celebrate that here with a bunch of festivities. Big things still on the horizon. Tomorrow is our Career, College and Career Fair in the gym. I don't know if you peeked in the gym, there's a bunch of tables and stuff set up in there. We'll have a bunch of vendors and people talking about different career options and career paths for kids, and so we're kind of excited about that. And then also something we started last year with that is when they're done, right after lunch, we're going to break out sessions, and every student will go to two different sessions and kind of have a, there'll be a panel of some of the vendors to answer questions for them and just to talk about, even in more depth, about different career options. So, really excited about that, and our counselor, Leslie Hieronima, spent a lot of time surveying kids, what are you interested in? What do you want to go hear about? And then putting all that together, and she's communicated all that with teachers for after lunch tomorrow. So, kudos to her for that. And then if you have little kids in the district, they're all excited about the barnyard, which happens on Friday, down right where all the welding booths were that we looked at at the beginning of our tour. That'll be a barnyard full of animals on Friday, so that'll be a lot of fun. Let's see, also with that, this time of year, we've got students signing up for their classes next year. That is coming to an end. We were really hoping to have all that in, I think, by the end of this week. So, if you have kids who have not yet selected their classes that are high school, they need to get those in pronto. Kind of along those lines, something we've been working on for a couple of months here, had a couple of different staff optional meetings after school where we talked through some pros and cons of kind of a revised schedule for next year. And so, a lot of input from a lot of different people. What we've noticed is we tend to have, about every other week, we have some kind of alternate schedule. We have an SEL lesson, which are great and necessary, and we want to do those for our kids, but it's an alternate schedule that can sometimes mess with people's day if you're used to certain routines. We do Zelo as a career Pathfinder program. We like to give kids time to do that, so we'll have those advisory sessions, if you will, once a month or once a quarter. We have special surveys that kids have to fill out from time to time. We have different things we want to present to them. And at the high school, we don't have any time built into the day for, like, individual pullouts for kids who need extra help with math or extra help with reading or anything like that. And so, we've been just thinking about this for the past couple of years, how can we make this happen? And we have landed on a schedule where we'll, everybody in the building, all kids are going to have a common study hall resource advisory all at the end of the day for a full class period. So, that way, everybody is available to meet with the teacher or, you know, get pulled out for extra intervention time or whatever at that at the end of the day. Definitely has some challenges. It's something new for those of you that have kids who are going to be seniors next year. I know it caused a little bit of alarm for them to think that they couldn't have exactly what they wanted, you know? This is what I wanted for my senior year, and, you know, maybe we're taking one of those opportunities away from them, but I think that between myself, Mr. Kirkton, and Ms. Hieronima, we've been able to talk through most of those issues. But that's kind of a big thing, and it's been, we've had a lot of conversations with kids and a lot of conversations with staff over the past couple of months to work that out. So, I figured I'd throw that out and see if you guys have any questions about that. Yep, it actually works out well. BACC next year is going to be on a slightly different time schedule. They're going to start a little bit earlier with that, with that third time slot. So, the way that our schedule's going to work out, our kids will be able to go to their four classes in the morning like always, leave for BACC, and by the time they get back, there'll still be time at the end of the day for them to have that resource time, study hall slash advisory. All the BACC kids will be in a cohort, they'll have their own group, because they will be back a few minutes after the other one starts. But, yep, that works out really well. Good question, Derek.
Did you say it was a full class period at the end of the day, or just...
It's pretty close. We're actually expanding. Right now, our class periods are 44 minutes. They're going to be 45 minutes next year, so we're adding a minute to each class. The advisory is only 40 at the end of the day, but so, it's pretty close.
Got you. Is this replacing other study halls or additional?
Correct. It replaces that.
Okay.
So, as the master scheduler, I'm a little bit nervous about what that's going to look like because there won't be study halls throughout the day. They're all going to be eighth hour. I've not done that before, but there are schools our size that do this, so I'm confident that it can be done. It will be done. Yeah, that'll be every day, yeah. Even on days when we had an assembly, like we had the FFA assembly the other day, I think the way that our schedule will work, we'll go to all our first through seventh hour classes, and then we go to the assembly instead of advisory that day. On 2/20 release days, it'll work perfectly. We'll go to our seven classes and just won't have advisory that day. Yeah, and all the extra things that we need to work in can work in during that time. Now, I can think of exceptions. Last year, we had a guest speaker who came in, and they had to come in the morning. I had to have, you know, a 10 to 11 a.m. block for a guest speaker to come talk. In that instance, I'll have to create a different schedule and make that work, and we'll probably just chop the advisory at the end of the day so kids can still get, you know, their seven class periods as close to full-time as possible. But it gives a little flexibility with much fewer alterations to the daily routine. Okay?
Good evening. Is that on? Did you turn it off? It's on? Okay. Okay, so, last Friday, Valentine's Day, we had an exciting day of institute. We had a variety of different topics that teachers were able, and administration were able to participate in. Anita Beaman did a nice job of talking to our K through 5 classroom teachers on the available databases that we have as a district that our students and teachers have access to. We had some of our, like Hillary talked about, our mandated trainings. We have been working in getting our Heimlich training in for all of our staff members. The high school, since they've switched from SAT this year to ACT, they spent quite a bit of time just preparing for that upcoming test. We had department meetings, which included high school math as well as 6th through 12th grade science alignment. Each building had a violence prevention and conflict management kind of refresher of how we can support our students when they are dealing with conflict. We appreciate having institute days for our special education department to have time to get together as a district and meet with Tri County to see what any needs are or concerns that might need to have some discussion. And then we also had Sabres training for our administrators on how we could delve deep into the reports that that screener is, the data that screener is giving us. This month has particularly been busy with continuing to look at different curricula for next school year. I've talked about the literacy committee meeting once a month up until this point. Now, we're at the point where we have it narrowed down between two curriculums, Amplify CKLA and Savis My View for K-5, and then My Perspectives for 6th through 8th. So, the next part of this process is us visiting schools, having another Q and A with our representatives, and then hopefully, we will make a decision and have a curriculum to present to you at the April board meeting. In addition to that curriculum work, I've been working with the high school staff in looking at sociology and psychology curriculums, and we think that we're going to have something for you next month to approve. And then finally, we're also looking at the child development and parenting curriculum at the high school. A lot of it was very out of date at the high school, and so we've kind of done a nice progression of just looking at those and getting updated materials for our students. And so, we're hoping to have an adoption for child development and parenting, probably at the April, May at the latest, board meeting. Do you have any questions?
All right, and you can see the remaining reports in the board packet. Next, we have approval of consent items. I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items listed on attachment A as presented. Kenna and Derek.
Tom Lovett? Yes. Tom Daniel? Yes. Dave Cohen? Yes. Derek Berman? Yes. Derek Berman? I am.
Yes. Okay. Up next, we have old business, the Vernon Jones track change orders.
All right, so in your packet, you saw five change orders, and I wanted to make sure that you understood that they are all progressive, they're all added. So, if you look at just change order number five, which I believe is on page 196, you'll see all the items listed. You have already approved, board approved, change order number one, that was the bleachers and the press box, the very large item there. But we've already talked about change orders three and five, installing the access boxes for the FAT or the timing system at the track, and then also number five, demoing the Rittenhouse Memorial sign, not, want to be careful with that word, taking that down so we can get that cleaned off and ready to be remounted. But the existing poles are going to be taken down, and we're going to have new poles there. They're probably going to be placed a little bit further apart from each other than what they are right now and brought out a little bit closer to the actual concrete or actual current parking lot area, just to make it a little bit more grand as we enter that area. So, we had talked about approving that at a later date, but you have heard about that before. The only brand-new items on this would be number two and four, the even ones, installing takeoff boards and actually purchasing the takeoff boards as well. So, with your approval tonight, that would say yes to all of those items, even though you've already said yes to the big item. And then I will get those signed and back to Vernon Jones after, if you choose to approve.
I had a question about the takeoff boards and the, oh, the access boxes. Those weren't included in the original estimate of work?
No.
I just thought that seemed like regular track stuff, so I thought they were going to be included.
I think we're getting extra takeoff boards compared to what was in the package to start with.
So, the way it's going to be set up...
Can you go to a mic? Yeah.
For our large crowd at home.
Yeah.
Your brother. I know. He hasn't texted yet, it's fine.
Okay, so, we'll have two runways, and each has the capability of running north or south. So, depending on where the wind's coming from, like if the wind's coming out of the north, then you're going to want to jump this way, so you need takeoff boards at this end. But if you have a day when the wind's coming out of the south, you jump with the wind to your back, so you need takeoff boards down at the other end. Yeah, it would be nice if there was a way to just have two boards, one on each runway, and, you know, just put them the direction that you need to go, but then you have a hole that has to be filled, and there's not a good, safe way to do that with what we have. Some really, really fancy, high-tech tracks have that, but we won't have that capability. So, yeah, there we have, we have to have four. And I don't think, how many were initially included? Just, was it just two? One for each runway?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah, because we're only looking at an addition of two.
Yeah, so, I was just thinking this through and saying, wait a second, there's something missing from this so that it's fully functional.
Better to do it now than to wait and have that problem later.
Got you. So, not included. Just thought I'd ask.
Yeah, and the FAT system, that's really, that's really not, and that's not part of the track. That's something that you would need afterwards anyway, so it would just make sense for them to be doing the work. You notice some of the notes that you saw in the email today. Doing all that work underneath the surface, we want to make sure that it's going to be covered if something would go wrong, and if Vernon Jones does that, then they're taking care of any problems versus us, so.
Whose idea was it to put in the, well, the access box stuff, you know, the time?
Well, we've been talking about it for a while, but we asked them to quote that so we could take a look at it, because we know it's a big project to do. And obviously, if we're going to run any track meets there, we have to have a system for it.
Got you.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I need a motion and a second to approve change orders number one through five from Vernon Jones for the Blue Ridge CUSD number 18 track project as presented. Chelsea and Derek.
Tom Lovett? Yes. Dave Cohen? Yes. Derek Berman? Yes. Frank Allen? Yes.
Yes. Up next, strategic planning update.
Okay, so from Patrick Allen, you did receive, and also in your board packet, you received an update from the January 11th event that we had, and you'll see how he puts all of those post-it notes. He typed that up for us, so we didn't have to do that, which was very nice. So, I'm going to ask Ryan to come to the microphone again right now and talk a little bit about what we've done so far and what our next projects are in finalizing that plan.
Yeah, I'll just kind of go over a few things. So, basically, as an admin group, we've been meeting every, not every AC, but about every other AC, having some dialogue about the different goals that are there. We've been kind of looking at just two board goals to begin, making sure that those are the goals that we want, and then starting to develop some subgoals. And so, we are still a ways from bringing, maybe next month, might be able to have maybe a goal and some subgoals to bring, at least in one of the broad board goal areas. I think right now, just kind of determining, you know, the level of specificity that we want within each of those goals is kind of important, you know, as we move forward. So, that formatting will be important, too. The current format, we haven't loved, the way that it's created and the way that we update it, and so trying to look at, is there a better, kind of more efficient or effective way to, you know, record the information and bring it back to the board, whether that's quarterly or, you know, semi-annually or annually, depending on the goals that we're working towards. So, right now, we've kind of focused a little bit on facilities and a little bit on programs and services, have kind of been our two main areas, but we will be working, you know, over the next several months, two to three, hopefully have everything ready, and then as we start to develop and kind of finalize some ideas that we think are kind of good directions to go, we'll definitely bring those to you to look through those and see what you think and get us some feedback in those areas so we can finalize a goal and have those ready. So, you know, I would like to have everything finalized and ready to go by June. I mean, everything, I mean, in a complete package, ready-to-go format, but in the next few months, we'll basically be bringing you goals and subgoals that you'll be able to take a look at and determine, you know, what feedback that you have, so we make sure that we're guiding the ship in the right direction.
I don't know if they quit. Patrick Allen was talking about, he said...
...showed up at the strategic planning meeting and hopefully get a little more, but we developed these goals to make sure we're getting on their line. Because I think that's something that factors.
Strategic planning.
We just have digital communities, but, you know, but, I was trying to do the whole out there.
We...
I didn't know, you know, how we're doing that.
That. Yeah. That's something that I haven't thought about exactly. We can definitely look at the best way to do so, whether that's, you know, creating something and putting it out there, and then, you know, once the board, I think, feels comfortable with something, putting that out there for people to see, and then maybe provide some feedback if any community members want to share that. I don't know if that's in person or more this email process or something along the way where they have that opportunity to share. But I think first, we want to make sure that, I mean, I think Patrick did a pretty good job of encompassing most of the goals. I do think that there are some things that we want to tweak a little bit from the goal perspective and the sub-goal perspective. Well, there's no subgoals, so we're going to tweak a lot of that. But I do think that once we kind of have a good idea from the information that we received from PAC and from that community feedback that we got, the notes, et cetera, that we see... from that community feedback that we got, the notes, et cetera, that we see those pros and deltas, that we'll be able to bring you something that you can kind of provide, you know, some feedback on. Once we feel comfortable as a Board and admin team together, I think we can share that out with community members in some way. We'll have to figure out what avenue we want to do that with. And then, you know, get some feedback, and then we can finalize things.
Really like to comment on stuff on Facebook.
Yes, they do, yes, they do.
I like, I like that.
One for each broad board goal area.
I like that better than Facebook idea.
Yeah, so, I'm open to that, whatever you guys think in that situation. I mean, obviously, we want something that everybody is behind and moving forward. Now, we can't please everyone, and we know that. But we have to make and prioritize what we think is important for our district and community, and then we'll go from there. Any other questions? Okay.
Next is new business, request for additional van purchase for Transportation Department.
Okay, so Deborah is here. I'm going to ask her to come up and speak to you about a possible new vehicle.
Good afternoon, everyone, evening, something like that, it's been a long day, so. Okay, so my request for additional vehicle is due to the Transportation Department. As you all know, we are shorthanded always. But we've had a lot of help this year, and we really appreciate it, from coaches to teachers to aides on my buses, when needed. So, but all of our white vehicles are being used all at one time. And so, that really limits the ability to say, yes, I can give you a vehicle sometimes. We end up having to say, well, can we reschedule for this day? Or we just can't do it, we don't have enough vehicles. We don't have a driver to put into another bus. So, the white vans and the white buses are very valuable to our, being able to connect everything and get the coaches where they need to go, or the trips for teachers, especially, you know, like we just went to the Holocaust. There was no way that we'd been able to send them to the Holocaust Museum if one of the people hadn't have stepped over at the junior high and taken that trip for us. So, my request for an additional van is to help do some of that coverage and take some leeway away from having to say no to coaches and teachers that are helping us out because we don't want to lose that value for our department. So, I went to research, I went to the contracts that the state issues to different vendors and places that will sell us the vans. The first thing I looked for was where we always have went, to Landmark Ford. And says, hey, what is the price for a 10-passenger van? Those are the type that we have right now, and they're very useful in many different ways, from a small bunch to taking the Board to a trip to the teachers actually being able to put nine people on them and be able to take them with them. So, well, they said that they don't make them anymore, and I can't get them. So, how do I fit nine, 10 people on a vehicle without having a driver take them? And some of the coaches doesn't want to take the 14 passengers because like a school bus, we do have blind spots that you can't see around, so they feel more comfortable in vans. So, we've sent two vans on one trip to be able to cover it, to make the coaches be able to be more comfortable and drive for us. So, I couldn't find a 10-passenger van in that area, so I called around about different vans. And as you can see in the packet there, I checked about a Chrysler Pacifica, which is seven-passenger. You only get six passengers plus the driver. So, I kept looking. I found another company that specializes in school buses, small school buses, wheelchair buses, and wheelchair or school vans. And so, they can get the Ford 10-passenger vans. They are specialized, and they have the contract through Ford to be able to do that. So, I itemized it out, let you guys know what kind of vehicle it is, what's all in it. The vans that we have now are rear-wheel drive. This van that would be 10-passenger is now a all-wheel drive, if you approve it, and which would really help out in this bad weather that we've had lately because the rear wheels slide a little bit on the road and make everybody a little nervous going down there. So, it would really help during the bad weather as well as helping to get our people where they need to go. There are several different options with that one. The first van, the seven one, is a pay and pull, and it would have to be ordered next week for next year. The second one has lease options and loan options. I personally recommend the loan option because then we own it for the school district instead of paying on it all that time and have to give it back. This loan also is zero down. And this request is for FY '26 school year. None of our buses are being returned this year at the end of the year, so we don't have any buses that'll be needing to be leased in that period. And that's my presentation.
Thank you, Deborah. One of the things that we did, if you note on the bottom of page 217 in your Board Packet, it says, just like what she said, we're not doing any bus trading this year. So, we didn't know of any other vehicle requests unless an issue arises. So, of course, something's arisen since we wrote this. Rusty let us know that the truck that he's driving is in pretty bad shape. Deborah, I don't know if you can add any of the information about what Rich has already tried to do to help us with that truck and what's not able to be fixed.
Okay, so, Rich brought it in because it keeps throwing codes. And he brought it in to check it, and when he got underneath it, found that they had a lot of transmission coolant lines. I don't, and I'm not a mechanic, so I can't tell you what all, how far they go, or, but they're rusting out. So, he replaced what he could of them so far. It also has the rusting out of the bed, the undercarriage, the bumper, the tailgate is all rusting through. Now, the fan motor started rattling and screeching with noises, and it is unknown where the ticking is coming from because Rich hasn't been back since I was told that one this morning. And it's making a ticking noise, either it's exhaust or lifters, we don't know yet until it's checked out for that. So, it's just multiplying in different issues that it's had. And so, it could be an issue here in the short future.
So, we have paper packet in front of you, the one that's stapled that says truck quote on top. That's something that, we didn't have time to get into the Board Packet, so you can't do anything about this. But I just wanted you to know, if we were looking at replacing one of the trucks that we have for the district, we're looking at about $48,000 to be able to get the plow on that. Behind on pages two and three, you'll see a little bit more information about that vehicle and what would be added to it on page four, five, and six. Deborah went ahead and asked, you know, what would be the ordering time on this vehicle? They're saying if we get something in by the end of March of '25, that we could have this ready for fall of '25. Rusty did say we probably could make it through another school year with what he's driving right now. But there's never really a great guarantee when we know that there's quite a few things that are wrong with it. So, I just wanted you to know that when we're talking about this cost for an activity van, that a truck is on the horizon as well. So, I'm not asking you to make a truck decision, but I want you to be mindful of that when we talk about the white van.
What kind of truck does he have currently?
A Ford F-250, and it has the tow package on it. So, it has, not tow package, but the. The, the what? This, yes, that's what I'm trying to. And it has a saler on the back of it also. So, they can actually move the salter over to the other, and they can take some wiring off of that to make it versatile for other trucks, too, if we decide to replace it. So, we can take a little bit off of it before we get rid of the truck.
Have you ever considered any different brands?
What I do is go through the state contracts and see what kind of discounts we can get. And that's the one that does the Ford pickups for the 250 range and the 350 range.
Got you, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. So, you have in front of you a lot of, lot of information. Maybe this month is one where we decide we're going to sit and think about it a little bit longer, or maybe you're ready to decide something about the white van. That's kind of your call right now. I know that through email, there was a question about, you know, do we lease? Do we, do we do a loan on this, so it's ours at the very end? As Deborah said, this would be van number four. On, in regular weather conditions, this one would be the last one off the lot to save the mileage. In bad weather conditions, it would be the first one off the lot. So, we don't have as much bad weather as we do non-bad weather. So, I would think that we could keep the mileage pretty low on this. That's why my thought would be, from my limited knowledge in buying vehicles, it would be to go with a loan instead. So, other thoughts?
I agree with buying it outright, if possible. Do the finances look for purchasing vehicles? We have plenty of money in that transportation fund. That's a, that's our sarcasm and kind of joking in that. I know that one's always tight.
Yeah, that one is tight. This is, I think Deborah said, this is the no loan, I think she said that part, or it's written in here. It's a no-money-down loan payment. We could also look at, you know, putting some money down and, because obviously, we're paying more if we're paying overtime, so. And we're talking about Mr. Peyton's budget. This is not my budget, this is Mr. Peyton's budget, so he's got all the money in the world.
Run it down.
Exactly. Yeah. So, I guess the question tonight would be, are you ready to make a decision now? And if so, it sounds like you might be leaning towards the loan. And if you're looking at the loan, that would be the top motion there. Then it would be a matter of deciding 48, 60, or 72, if you want to specify that. Or maybe you want us to come back with more information about putting.
Well, I would like to know, like, how much are we paying extra in interest for each of those loans?
I just did it, it's pretty major. I mean, if you just take 18, 44 times 48, or 72 times 13, 18, the difference is. I would be a fan that if it works in the budget, to do 48 months.
What's the difference between the two?
I wasn't on my phone texting, I was doing math.
Yeah, $48,000, or sorry, the $78,478 would go up to $88,523 if it was a 48-month loan. The $78,478 was go up, would go up to 91, 348 with 60 months.
And nearly $95,000 for 72 months.
Yeah, for 72 months.
So, I mean, that's $7,000.
So, how much extra are we paying for the 48 months?
About $10,000.
And you'd add about 15, or about $7,000 onto that, more. Yeah. I would just be a fan of paying less interest if we can. I know it's.
It's $500.
$500 a month, but. We can look at the big number.
Yeah. So, maybe if we could look at 30, $35,000 down and then taking the rest in.
Chelsea said you like to write checks, did you want to write this one?
You know what, I was.
Derek talked about something tonight, too, wanting to make a donation.
There you go. I'll let him be the gentleman and go first.
Derek's like, wait, what?
Tapping out.
So, did, so, did, both vehicles, were they both through Landmark? Was it, or for the van and the truck? Two different places?
Three different places.
Oh, yeah. Because the van was specialized. So, it's not even an option to go to the same place for both. So much for a volume discount.
Yeah. But if we could look at maybe putting 30, $35,000 down, doing a 48-month loan on the rest.
Because these are numbers with zero down, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, another thing that you could do is just make sure there's no early payoff penalty, and then we could roll it in the next year's budget, get them paid off before we accumulate any more of this interest. Just have to make sure that's in the agreement, otherwise, they might sally you with it. We don't want that. Do, do we know if that was part of the agreement, or we have to look back at it? Because I would be interested in knowing if we could pay it off early next year with next year's budget.
Yeah.
That would be, I'd really like to know that. And then, and for both.
Okay, do, how do people feel on the purchase, purchase of a 10-passenger van? Do we want to vote on that tonight?
I personally don't like the fact that we've had kiddos in the snow rather than not all-wheel drive. So, I would say yes, let's get the ball moving on that.
It sounds like to me, we're either going to buy it outright, or we're going to pay it off early. So, as long as we can pay it off early without, you know, any kind of penalties. I would really like to know that. Otherwise, we'll have to pay cash for it, and it'll have to come out, I don't know. I'll leave that to you, Hillary, figuring out how we make that work.
Yeah, and I can come back with that information. So, maybe tonight, you'd just be approving the purchase of a 10-passenger van and just not put the other detail in it, and I'll come back to you with more detail after that.
Okay, so you don't want us to prove, like, no.
Yeah, don't, don't tell me, don't give me the arrangements for it. Just a motion and a second to approve the purchase of a 10-passenger van.
Chelsea. With a donation by Chelsea, the Lefelman family, we agree to put a plaque on the front, dash.
I can do a plaque.
Only if there's a bow on it.
Yeah, just take out the, with a blank number on the loan.
Yeah, I'll donate the plaque.
Bellflower coming in hot tonight, hopping out in school.
Okay, I need a motion and a second to approve the purchase of a 10-passenger van for Blue Ridge CUSD as presented. Okay, so we have Jonathan and Derek.
Jason Lovell?
Yes.
Dave Eber?
Yes.
Anna Johnson?
Yes.
Derek Breen? Tom Lovell?
Yes.
Tom Daniel?
Yes.
Frank Collins?
Yes. Okay, up next, we have consideration of proposal for District Office VAV Box rezoning design.
Okay, can I go back for a minute? If I could, so, we have the truck quote here, we're just kind of hanging on to that, just so it's in the back of your mind, just in case, we know that this would also be something for next year. But it's just kind of sitting right there, okay. All right, just want to make sure. Okay, so, going to the VAV boxes. VAV boxes, when the unit office was reconfigured, that was probably in 2019, it was before the pandemic. That was taken from large classroom spaces down into multiple offices. The HVAC wasn't zoned for individual offices like that. We understand that that was a decision made when cost was prohibitive, and we just let that place, you know, take the hit. Right now, with the secure entry area that we have, that is zoned properly with a VAV box. That was just something that we had designed recently. Now, the rest of the office, we're, we're suffering, we can't control the heating and cooling at all in there. And so, we're looking to make that upgrade in there. So, what you're approving right now is not doing the full project, but having GHR Engineering Company come and do the reviewing, what's there, making the design. If we have a cost that looks like it's going to be near $35,000 or more, then we would have to go through the formal bidding process. Even if we didn't, and we were just doing estimates on our own, we would still want to have proper drawings so everybody was quoting the same exact job, and you have to have drawings in order to do that, so. But when I look back at the document that was given, somebody had asked the question, does that $8,000 cover any of the bidding process? If you look in the last bullet, I'm on page 219. Bidding assistance, I would like to think that's all that they would charge us, it would all be included in the $8,000. I don't want to make a promise on that yet. There, there could be some other things that we were charged, but hopefully. What you're being asked to approve is the, of this project.
So, the design actually costs more than the actual labor?
Oh, I don't think so, I think the.
What was the $3,500 then that you said?
Oh, $35,000.
Oh, okay, I misheard then.
Yeah, and that's the bid threshold for schools.
$3,500, that would be.
Yeah.
This is still, and this is where I'm, I'm a little curious about $8,000 just for design from a group that's not even going to put it together.
Right.
Is that not something that we can go out to the HVAC groups? And, I mean, that is what, one of the things that they are supposed to do as well. Can they not do that also?
The way, the way it's been explained to me is if you don't, like, Rusty drew designs for just that concrete wall that was here on the Ruth M. Snyder Garden. If you don't give the same exact information to all the people who are providing bids or estimates, you're going to get everybody designing it themselves, and then your costs could be very far off from the project. So, somebody has to do the, the design part, so they know what they're bidding on.
We can't just do an R.
We can't just do an RFP and say, this is the problem, and we need solutions to it? As far as the?
We've never done it like that. We always go to the architect or engineer, depending on what type of project it is.
And?
That's what I know how to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought normally they did a 10% as what they charged us.
So that might be their 10% guess.
So they think it's going to be $80,000? Yeah. Yeah.
It's always more for a school district. Prevailing wage, it's our, you know, our fun tax that we talked about that's invisible.
I have an earlier question for our HVAC guy over here. I don't know how it would work with the existing system. I don't, they might compete against each other. I'm not sure if you could just, I haven't worked with this type of a system before, so I don't know if that's a possibility or not. Yeah, just close off lines, and everything would be fine. A lot of time, a lot of times, that doesn't work out the way you want it to. I'm not familiar enough with a commercial system like this to know what's possible.
At my work, we have the mini splits. We have six of them in our area. We're in one of the first buildings on campus. It all runs off like a boiler heat. It's ridiculous. We had no way to get rid of that other system that runs into our office, because it's just, I mean, there's radiators and things like that, and hot water pipes. And so the systems do compete. So it is tough. I will say, for example, this week, our mini splits are set on 60, because we do not want them to turn on, because it's 74 in our office, with having nothing on, and all of the heat is turned off, because all that residual heat that comes in the building and the way it works, it, it does that. So I would imagine that because there's already like a system in there, and when it competes, it's, it's tough. Like, it's a tough situation. I know, like I said, we compete in, just in our little area, so I can imagine it's similar. We are similar in the aspect of, they were big offices. Our offices at my work were three classrooms that were made into a conference room. The middle is now our workspace and an office. And then the third classroom, that was originally a classroom in the English building, is three offices. And I will say, one difference that we have is because of the way our, the splits are, our, our walls only go up so high, because it has to be able to bring your heat and cooling in. So we're very similar, like with what we have. And ours is a completely separate unit. We have a thing on the roof outside that runs our system. Now, I will say, the way ours worked with those, the negative of those, once it gets below a certain degree, ours doesn't work. And so then that's when we have to go off the residual heat. So thankfully, that works okay in the summers, more when they work for us.
Have we contacted the, who's our, is it US Mechanical? That's the service provider for the chillers and everything?
United Mechanical?
United Mechanical, cool, yeah. Have we contacted them about the issue and just said, hey, you know, this doesn't seem to be working quite right? Can you fix it? And see what they say?
I, I don't know if Rusty had contacted them. He works very closely with them. I'm not sure if, you know, he decided to go to GHR. They're a very trusted, I mean, they've been with us long-term. And I feel like, he felt like it was priority to get that design done. So everybody is estimating and bidding on the same exact project. We want, want it to be done one time and correctly.
It just seems like a lot of money for how many, how many square feet are the two former classrooms? You know, to condition that amount of space, it just seems like a boatload of dough.
Yeah.
I mean, the chiller replacement was $800,000, and this is 10% of that, potentially. If they're anticipating an $8,000 commission, or whatever you want to call it.
Are you done?
1%.
Kidding.
Go ahead.
I don't know if Jason was trying to get at this, but like, if we have them draw it, well, then there's only going to be like, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, one way to look at solving the problem, but if we have different people come in and look at it, we might get, well, you guys could try this, you could try this, or you could try this. And it just seems like if we do this, we're narrowing ourselves to, this is what you guys should do. And maybe there might be somebody out there who might have a little more ingenuity. Is that what you were getting?
This is their job, though. This, this is the engineering company. That's their job to do that, to know how to do the design, to know what we're supposed to get. And the people who install, it's their job to follow the plans and do what they're told. So it, yeah.
Just a lot of money after the fact.
Yeah. Do we want to, I wonder if Mr. Woolley would be available by phone? Or is he already sleeping?
I think it is very important to solve the problem. My, my issue is not that I don't want to solve the problem. It's just?
Can we do it the most efficient way?
Yeah.
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 Is available? Okay. Call Rusty Woolley. Hey, I have you? Hey, all right. So we have a VAV box question for you. We're, we're not hesitating on fixing the problem with the, with the unit office's heating and cooling. We're having a problem with the cost of engineer. My explanation so far has been looking at the engineers, the expert in designing. I'm sure we have the same. Solid design, so if we're getting estimates, or if we're getting official bids, that everybody has the same information that they're looking from. One question, what, should they be the one designing, or do we just ask all the different companies to put their own design up there? So I don't know if you can speak, and I got you.
So that gets back to the tricky part with going out for bids for stuff, right? So, and you and I have talked about that. If we go out for bids, the scope has to be the same. It has to be the same across the board. If not, you're going to get everybody's own rendition on what needs to happen. Okay? So if I call, you know, and they call it value engineering, there is people who have that, like, let's take United Mechanical, for example. They have an engineer they work with that'll do value engineering. And so they just come in real quick, look at the, what we want, throw together a plan, and they give us the price. Then the next company you call, they may work with a different one. You may get a different design. So you're not comparing apples to apples. What you're going to get is what each company and their little engineer thinks needs to happen. So if you want to actually bid a project and get competitive bids, like we've discussed, you have to have one scope. One scope only.
And you're saying that you trust GHR? That's the proper company to go to, to get that scope, not to one of the companies that's going to do the work?
They are mechanical. They're, they are a mechanical engineer. So they've, they've done all of our mechanical stuff, as far as I'm, I know. Now, I can surely just go and, and, you know, have somebody do it, but the problem is, is you can't take that and go to the next person. Right? Like, it, the design, you're, what you're going to get is a, is a bid, you're not going to get the plans.
Right, so you're saying, you're saying if you?
You don't get their plans.
If you went to United Mechanical and said, hey, what could you do for this? They'll give you an idea, they would give you a cost, but they're not going to give you anything that you could take and compare it to somebody else. And we want or need to have multiple, either estimates or bids.
Yeah, I mean, that would be up to the board. I, I have a feeling it's probably going to break that threshold, where we're going to have to. Maybe not. And, and that is something I haven't done yet, is an estimated cost. And maybe we start there. But then you just prolong, you know, I mean, we're prolonging it. So it's either, it's, yeah, half a dozen want to lay, you know?
Yeah. Jason's point was, hey, it looks like GHR is usually a 10%. So are they estimating this as being an $80,000 project? And that's why they're charging us $8,000 to do this design work? Or, you know, does that $8,000 feel high to you?
Uh, I mean, not when you're trying to redo mechanicals like that. I mean, we're talking chilled water, you know, chilled and heated, you know, preheat coils, and trying to tie in the chilled water lines, and I don't know.
What other questions for Rusty?
Rusty, with GHR, are they going to try and look at something that isn't, is a separate system for such a small square footage?
In order to do the separate system, you could put, again, mini splits everywhere. But they're going to be plastered on the side of your building, they're, they also have their own issues. Up there, you already have chilled mains in the halls, and you have our hot water in the halls. So for, you would tie back into the system. There's plenty of that. You know, compared to back where I'm at, there's none of that, being the old part of the building. There's no access to that. So in order to add something like that back to that, or you have a whole main and everything in that, $100,000, you know, right out of the gate. So this, this will be the exact same thing as the rest of the school on how it operates. If you would like, I, I can call them, I can call, you know, we work heavily with United, and they would definitely come out and give us a price. They're also going to bid the work, I'm assuming, as well. So we can go that route to see, you know what I mean? If, if you would like to. I just, I, I brought in GHR because of conversations Hillary and I have had, you know, with respect to your guys' comments on getting multiple quotes. And I want you to, I want the board to have the right information. So I don't want to, I don't want to bring you six quotes, and all the scopes are a little different, because you're not making about, you know, I mean, the decision process is flawed at that point.
I, I did. And I think that is a good plan for, for a larger footprint. I'm just concerned that if we start spending $50,000 to $80,000 on square feet of heating and cooling, that's, that's a lot.
Yeah. It is.
That makes me think that some other way would be able to work. And that's, ignorance on my part, and I'm hoping that some other way will work.
Right, and I can, if you would like, I can have Ryan with them come out, and we can go over options, you know, besides that, to see if there is a cheaper option that'll work. It just scares me, because that's the front of the building, you know? So if you go with a different, the only other way you're going to be able to do it is, one, a huge condenser somewhere, which, that part of the building has a second story, so you don't have a good roof access to run, you know, just to mount that without running a mile-long line set to it. So you would have to do something, you know, wall-mounted right outside, which can be done, it just depends on how you want the, the look of that front of that building to be. And we're, we're not talking about monster mini split units either. I don't know, I didn't take you guys out, because it was cold and dark, but the, the condenser on that thing on my unit, which those offices are about the same size, is fairly small. And they can go up a little bigger and run two offices off one, or three offices off one, you know? So you may only have one unit out there running all those spaces. But then, we don't have control of that through our BAS system, which is our Building Automation System, which is our controls. Not such a big deal, because it's private little offices, and it's a district office, you know? We're not talking about classrooms and all of that, so.
Yeah, well, socks, Ryan.
I mean, I will tell you, it does, the temperatures vary greatly up there. Greatly. GHR did say that in that original, when they, I don't know if Hillary brought this up, the original design for that was to have all of that work done, and it was cut out previous administrator, when all that redesign up there went.
Can we get the original design, and then just put that up?
I, I don't know. I don't know if that works, now that all of that was kind of redone. Because now you're dealing with ceiling grids and, you know, something that wasn't there.
Okay, so my, my guess at this point kind of is that the board might advise that you go back and talk to Richard a little bit, maybe talk to United Mechanical a little bit more, see if we can get some other ideas, and, and try again in March, and hopefully have?
Yeah, perfectly willing to do that, yep.
Okay. Everybody good?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, go take care of your ducks.
Okay, so, nothing for that one. Okay. All right, so next is closed session. I need a motion and a second to move from open session to closed session for appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance dismissal of specific employees in the district at 8:20. Sig and Kenna.
Yes.
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 Kenna Yeho?
Yes.
Dana Yeho?
Yes.
Dana Yeho?
Yes.
Franky Long?
Yes.
Yes. We're behind schedule.
Thanks, attendees.
It's not 8:06.